Hey, we're gonna restart now with the regular agenda. Reverend Jones, tell us who we are, what we're doing, and what's next.
We are not in the world of politics, we are just zooming. We are at the point where we are looking at the late files, and there are three of them. It's an order 272, Preserving Restriction on 60 for Purchase Street. There's an ordinance 90, which is a proposed electrical fee schedule. And there's a version 264, let me clarify that, it's Greg Earl's. It really is just more from active building condition to conditional building condition. To be more in sync with what the state would like. Those three double late files.
Excuse me, are you reading the separate late files? Second discussion. Hold the paper.
Hi.
Any thoughts? Okay, public comments? So while the clerk is getting a list on the door for people that are physically present, if they're either on Zoom, they're still accepting or comment. That way, raise your hand, let go. One person, please raise your hand on the matter. It's in this, that's active for you. So when I call your name, please give your name and address. Name and address. If you could step up, there's a marking on the floor. Stand there and talk for the hour-long shape thing. Two minutes. A person, Greg Earl, Stanborn Road, Hampton Falls, New Hampshire.
Thank you, I'm Greg Earl, Stanborn Road, Hampton Falls, New Hampshire. I'm here to speak on two items. One is my own appointment. I look forward to discussing it in committee. And if you would let me know when that meeting might be, or through the clerk, I'd appreciate it. The second is the electrical fees. I do owe a little bit of an apology here. We were working on the fees, and the clerk let me know that you had in committee a whole fee structure that we do every year. I didn't want to wait here, it's been close to a quarter of a decade since we've made these changes, and I think they're fairly important. Again, in committee, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Ann D.C.
My name is Mary Ann D.C. I live at 10 Kent Street, Newburyport. And I'm here to support changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's really important that we honor the original inhabitants of this country and not applaud the sort of colonizers who have systematically tried to rid the nation of indigenous people.
Thank you. Next, Betsy Hazen.
Thank you. I need one, sorry. Hi, I'm Betsy Hazen. I live at 30 Open Street, Unit 2, in Newburyport. Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of changing the holiday of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. My name is Betsy Hazen. I have loved living in Newburyport for the past 25 years. I am one of the founding members of the First Religious Society Unitarian Universalist Indigenous Peoples' Day Initiative. Our group consists of educators, students, and members of the FRS-NU community. We have been working on aligning ourselves with like-minded groups in the city and by getting virtual signatures from Newburyporters on our IPD petition, which was crafted and distributed late last month. Today, we have 58 out of 100 signatures that we see. I speak with you all tonight for two main reasons. First, I read a book three years ago entitled "An Indigenous People's History of the United States" by Dunbar Ortiz. It is meticulously researched and substantiated home on American history from the point of view of Native persons. I was shocked and disturbed to read the true history of this country, which is grossly distorted in public school history classes. I want to help change that narrative. Secondly, I'm a direct descendant through both my mother's and my father's bloodlines to four adults on the ship the Mayflower. I have always been proud of this heritage. However, since reading in my adult years the books on the Mayflower, I felt a sense of guilt around the horrors of war, genocide, rape, and obliteration of Native culture, which eventually took place. From these two perspectives, I asked the city of Newburyport to join the 16-plus cities and towns in Massachusetts who have already changed the second mandate each October from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day to honor the original inhabitants and stewards of land and culture in the Merrimack Valley. Each city town of Massachusetts that passes this order builds consensus towards Massachusetts passing this on a state level and joining eight other states in the Union. Perhaps this is a beginning towards making Indigenous Peoples' Day the federal holiday in October. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Linda Lu Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Linda Lu Garcia, 18 Point Lane, in Newburyport. I wish to speak a resounding yes in support of the resolution to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I thank those who have introduced the resolution to the council. I and others are members of the Indigenous Peoples' Day effort of the Unitarian Universalist Church, as you just heard. But tonight, I wish to speak as an individual. Having lived in Phoenix, Arizona, I was a member of the Marketing Committee of the Herd Museum of Native American Art and History. We learn about the forced relocation of children to schools where they lost their names, their religion, their culture, and their families. In changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, we honor the millions of Native people who welcomed us to their shores. It is now high time we honor them by celebrating their immense contributions to this, their country of origin. Please vote yes and give birth to a new, a new day in Newburyport. Thank you.
Next is John Versera.
Yes, I am John Versera, President of Newburyport, speaking in favor of recognition of the proper historical designation known to this point as Columbus Day. My own heritage is largely Iberian and Central American. And my family long acknowledges the deceptions in the self-serving stories of what were the brutal Aztec domination of other tribes, the equally brutal Spanish conquest of Mexico, and the ridiculous narrative surrounding the Alamo. All of these and many more were patriotic stories to embellish the supposed moral heroism of their respective peoples, but are justly subjected in time to the rigors of objective history. Our present burden is to acknowledge that a failed expedition to India that landed nowhere near its objective and declared the inhabitants what they never were was not a discovery, but a serendipitous encounter. Columbus and his crew, whatever their intent and the bravery of their journey, were literally wandering around lost and if anything, were found by the Tiana, Arawak, and Lukaian people, certainly not Indians, who in turn suffered not only subjugation, but a great scientific mistake in name that they carry to this day. In this hopefully more enlightened era, let us correct this grievous error and acknowledge those long-ago natives of this part of the world who numbered at that time 125,000 more than comprised this and no few surrounding communities. I will add that we are not only a country, but a community. And I regret that when something is gained, something also is lost. In this case, the pride of certain of our fellow citizens who, like all of us, have contributed in many ways to the glory and strength of what our nation is. We ask them to join us in being true to the truth and celebrate thereafter Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Rebecca Bryan.
Everyone, good evening. Thanks for hearing us. And I want to start my two minutes by acknowledging that we are indeed standing on land that was traditionally occupied by the Kowasakhe and the Penetecu Abenaki people. I invite us all to remember and honor that the spirit and therefore the heart of this land lives on in the Penetecu and Abenaki people. And thank you for considering this request to formally change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Newburyport. I had two sets of remarks prepared. One of them prepared in the event that statistics hadn't been shared, which have been, so I'll go to share the others. I am the Minister of the First Religious Society Unitarian Universalist, the Chair of the Greater Newburyport Interfaith Clergy Association, and also a member of the DEI of the city. And I speak from all of those hats, as well as a very concerned citizen. I also want to thank the students from the Charter River School who came and brought this forth. It was second and third graders who actually brought this forth to the attention of the mayor last year. And they really deserve our acknowledgement. And when our children are asking us to do this, I ask us to listen. When I was serving a congregation in Brookline, Massachusetts, they went through this process and voted to make this change. In that congregation, we had the widow of the tribal leader of the Mashpee Tribe at the start of Cape Cod, and she was there. And her son and granddaughter were there as well. And to watch the looks on their faces that turned from disbelief, the granddaughter slumped in the chair, to absolute ecstatic joy was remarkable. These are people that we're talking about. These are their lives. It is their heritage, and they know the truth. And I ask that we honor it.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Sharman.
Hi there, I'm Cynthia Sharman. I live at 12 and 1/2 Market Street. And I am asking to volunteer on the cultural committee. Been here for 23 years, have contributed to a lot of the fun activities in town. Rubbish to Runway, Tinker House, Motsley Sculpture. I also work professionally in the design world, specifically in architecture. I have a lot of skills that I would like to now give back. That's who I am.
Next is Alyssa Plush.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Plush. I live on Mark 9, Mark Funley, in Newburyport. And I'm also here to speak in support of changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think, you know, that we've heard a lot of really good stuff. I'm not going to repeat any of that because I think they've said pretty much everything that I could say. I do want to just sort of acknowledge that a lot of us really did grow up learning that Columbus discovered America, but the indigenous people were already here. They were discounted in that teaching that we had. And the forums that were done, I don't think that, you know, celebrating a day and to remember those kinds of things is just horrifying now that we know that that's what it was. It's not something, you don't just keep doing it because it's been done. When you know better, when you learn something, you need to change it. And I do want to take this one opportunity though to say that I do recognize that this is one more in a series of things that Newburyport is doing that is performative in nature. And while I do think that performative things are also very important, I think that we need to commit ourselves to actual change that will help with racial and social and economic justice in Newburyport. And I'd like to see some of those things start to move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Virginia Casey.
Hi, I'm Virginia Casey. I live on 9 Mark Funley. And I'm going to the high school this year. And I don't have a lot to say, but mostly I think that the actions of Columbus, when he came to America, have been known, like, we figured out, like, what, or it was brought to our attention, like, what he did a long time ago. And I really think that this should have been brought up, like, I'm very in support of it, but I feel like it should have been brought up before, like. I think it is something that's very important, and it's a great first step. But I think we should be working on being the first to do things instead of just following with what everyone else is doing because I know a lot of other places are also making this change. And I think it would be great that if Newburyport became a leader and became the first people to do these type of changes.
Next is Sunny Douglas.
Thank you. My name is Sunny Douglas, and I live at 2 Mosley Avenue in Newburyport. I'm also a member of the DEI Alliance of Newburyport. And I'm here to speak on the same topic of changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We've heard a lot from everybody, like others, and I'm not going to repeat most of it. I think we should start with the acknowledgement that Columbus actually discovered nothing. The place existed, people existed, and had existed here for centuries. He, it took him three visits back and forth before he realized that this was not the place he thought he landed in. There was a different Italian sailor named Amerigo Vespucci, who was actually the person who wrote a book on the New World. And a math maker, a Dutch math maker, thought his name should be Latinized into America. And that's how America was named. Nothing to do with Columbus whatsoever. What Columbus did manage to do is initiate slavery, dehumanize an entire race of people, and open up really tremendous negative impact to the actual founders of this country, who are the native peoples of this country. I think one of the great things about the society we live in in Newburyport is that this is a community that is open, that is thoughtful, that is open to different kinds of perspectives. And as we learn new facts and unlearn fake facts, we are the kind of community that I think can take the, do the right thing and say, this makes absolutely no sense. Columbus discovered nothing, let alone America. And in fact, the harm he caused and the Pandora's box he opened up, we all have a lot to reckon with. One other element I wanted to note is that I do realize traditions matter. And Columbus Day has also served as the Italian-American Heritage Day for several decades. And that is not something that we necessarily need to throw away along with renaming. I think this is a day that can be given over to celebrating Native Peoples' history. And we should find a different way to continue to honor the great rich immigrant history of our Italian-American brethren. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone I have signed it. So now I can go to Zoom. First person wants to be, Johnny Lynn Evans. Is that her?
Hi, thank you, yes, I'm here. My name is Johnny Lynn Evans. I live on Jefferson Street in Newburyport. And I am here as the Director for River Valley Charter School. I wanted to just re, go back for a moment to the comments that Reverend Rebecca Bryan made as she referred to students from River Valley. Students last year from second and third grade had reached out to the mayor to have a conversation and bring forth this idea of changing the name from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And they read the mayor a short letter I thought that I would share with you just to give them some credibility for their role in this. I had a student who was supposed to be here tonight, but it got a little bit past her bedtime, and her mother informed me that she wasn't going to be able to make it. So here are the words from the students last October. "Thank you, Mayor Holliday, for meeting with River Valley Charter School students in second and third grade and taking the time to read our letters. We hope you take our letters to heart because we believe that Columbus Day should be changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Some of us don't feel that it's right to celebrate a person who was mean to others. Montessori children believe in peace education. We look at the bad and good things in history. If there are hurtful things, we need to help make change for the good. It feels better to celebrate the people who were here first, like the indigenous people. Thank you for your time." So I thought I would share that with you so you would know it actually came from the mouths of some children in Newburyport too. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Griffin.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be with you in person this evening, but I just wanted to again reiterate my interest in serving on the Newburyport Cultural Council. With over 30 years' experience leading, nurturing, and building nonprofits with a, an emphasis on the arts and education, I would love to be able to bring my skills and experience on behalf of the artists, the scientists, the historians, the environmentalists here in Newburyport. I have a background in the arts, starting with being raised by a concert pianist. I studied as a mezzo-soprano, have performed all over the world. And again, as I said, I've worked in the nonprofit industry. I've been fortunate to work with some local artists, including Briggs Design, the North of Boston Cancer Resource Nonprofit, and with Paula SD and others. And I have a real passion for the roles that the arts play in really creating vibrant communities and the people there. So I appreciate very much your consideration, and thank you for your time this evening.
That is 21 Phillips Drive.
Yes, I'm sorry, 21 Phillips Drive.
Next I have Amr Ibrahim.
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody. This is Amr Ibrahim. I live on 85 Prospect Street. And I'm speaking tonight both as the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, a member of the DEI Alliance, and as a private citizen, and also on behalf of my two children, Arissa and Anya, who are unfortunately sitting in South Station awaiting a bus back to Newburyport. And I'll keep my comments brief as everything I was going to say has already been said by other folks tonight. But I just wanted to say that I do support the order supporting the change of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day for multitude of reasons that have already been mentioned. And I thank the council for considering this and thank the folks that brought this to our attention, the students at River Valley Charter School, and Councilor Shand and Mayor Holliday for getting this to the council's attention. And I appreciate people considering making this change. Thank you.
That's all my answers I have. But I did have Jean Castello to hand up. So Ms. Castello, raise your hand again if you want to see. Okay, it's like that's a pass. All right, so back to our next item.
Good evening, councilors. And you have recent update. I sent you the latest afternoon, street and sidewalk update. Arlington Street, we discovered it needs to have a water main replacement, so that has to be pushed off. And Oak Street, South Palm Street, Gilvin Riley are going to replace Arlington Street this year in terms of payment. There's information on cost there, so please don't hesitate to reach out to me or DPS if you want to discuss that further. The water main replacement on Columbus Ave is complete, and we're waiting from the contractor because the next step is sidewalks. And we'll let you know as soon as that happens. The damage to High Street by Highway Safety, which is now called A5 Corporation, came with a new attorney and new engineer to review the status of High Street a couple of weeks ago. The last opportunity to repair the damage was totally inadequate, with $125,000. So we're hoping for a new, more reasonable settlement. I'll let you know as soon as I hear from Tom Lee, who's handling this case also for us. There's the Strife and Crosswalk Works is there for you. What we're doing, additional ADA ramps are being installed at Central Middle Street and on Garden Street. You don't have ADA ramps there. It's a good thing for downtown. We also have funding for four additional flashing beacons, which I think are really important. One is already in process of being installed at Colby Farm Lane at the intersection of Low Street and North Atkinson. We would like to look at High Street and North Atkinson as another option. We've had a really hard time crossing guards at that section two. Water Street and Harrison and Joppa because of the real interest of people and the high use now that the rail trail is open might be a good place for a flashing beacon there. And then, of course, we've already identified Pioneer Field. However, the challenge is there because there aren't sidewalks, and these bases can get hit. So I've asked DPS to work with the ward counselor to figure out if we can put bases around those to make it work. I also wanted to thank all the councilors who came and gave us feedback on the beta plan for paving. I have everyone's notes. I didn't know if you wanted to have me to send those to you, of everyone's feedback on the plan, would that be helpful? Okay, I will do that. High Street Marches Hill, we had a meeting on 6/23 with the residents, with some councilors. And Diane Gagnon are one of our city engineers. We looked at the Complete Streets tech model, modified that somewhat, brought it back, reviewed it internally. And now it's going to Public Safety. And Councilor McCully will work with the residents on site and review that proposal. And hopefully, we can move that forward and finally slow traffic down at Marches Hill. Water, there's been a lot of discussion about protecting our water supply, upgrading our water systems. Now that we've completed the MVP grant and protecting the sewer plant, we now have to look at our water supply. John R. White, our city engineer, gave a pretty high-level presentation about the challenges the city is facing with our water supply at the Storm Show search meeting on the 27th. This Thursday, I have a meeting with AECOM and DPS staff, engineers, everybody to talk about what we know about our current needs of our water supply, begin to prioritize those and try and get a couple of projects shovel-ready as more of the ARPA infrastructure money and our own internal money might be available. Unfortunately, our generator at the wastewater treatment facility has gone down again. This is a very critical piece of equipment that will be back up to our plant, as well as our wood station, should we lose electricity. The generator is over 10 years old, and the department, the parts to replace the motor will take 90 to 120 days to come in, not uncommon with what's going on with a lot of supplies. So we have rented a generator, which comes initially with a switch and electrical work for $16,500 a month and then drops to $13,500 a month as we go forward. This is a massive generator, as you can imagine. I will keep you posted on this. This is, you know, something that is of real concern. There's information on the CSOs, things I've been working on with the state. Marty Sudenberg, our commissioner for DNP, is also interested in working with the group on what we've been doing in terms of setting up a computer model. And we'll be reaching out to him also. I also gave testimony to, in support of Governor Baker's bill, to provide money to Merrimack River to address CSOs. Merrimack River dredge, I think I mentioned to you previously that there was a problem with the right-of-entry versus easements, and we had to become a non-federal partner with DCR. We've completed that whole process. I appreciate the support from KP, Ethan, and Andy in that process. So we're anticipating that they receive payment from DCR. And we anticipate that the bid docs will be ready soon. Our biggest concern right now is timing of the dredge project and what's going to happen with short-term protection of reservation terrorists. And the, heard from Secretary Peter Harris, she should reach out to me this week, and we should have another conversation about that. There's information there on the Bulkhead Project in terms of where we are and the fact that it went through two tiers of approval at Congress at this point. Could be $2.5 million towards an upgrade there, which is very exciting. The Council on Aging, as you know, is open. The seniors are really enthusiastic about being back and participating in programs. And you have funding from the Friends to fund $15,700 towards two pickleball courts, which is something towards two pickleball courts, which is something that people really like and want in the city, I guess. I haven't played, maybe I should. You have two contracts before you to review. Ask me. And Harry Cronin is here, and I give him a tremendous amount of credit in the work that he does with, you know, multiple departments, multiple organizations across the city. It's not just police, not just fire, and does an incredible job of negotiating contracts for employees. And I also appreciate the work that our team does in the city. So those two contracts are before you. Terms of appointments, you have Mark Murray as the marshal, Greg Rolls you've heard from. And one I forgot to tell you about was Donna Trevitt, which I sent you a follow-up email. Really, really thrilled. You talked to any single person at City Hall about the work that she's doing leading our HR office since the abrupt departure of our former HR director, and strongly encourage you to support her going forward. Don't need to talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think you've heard a lot of positive support of that. I also encourage you to expand our Affordable Housing Trust to seven people. I think we can get a few more people really passionate about affordable housing. It only helps us move forward with this critical need of our city. You all received a letter from the butters on, you know, the gas station at State and High Street. I reached out to Global Alliance Energy, and you saw they came out and did some weeding and cutting and cleaned up what they could of landscaping. I am to hear from them this week regarding their details of their future plans. But there also is an opportunity for the council to work with the council president on that in terms of pulling their licenses, because it's there till twenty twenty-three. They have to decide whether it's going to be a gas station again. I think all of us will prefer that. It might be a gas station, but, you know, we'll have a conversation about what the role of the councils in terms of that permitting. You will be receiving anyone who's been identified for the ARPA committee. You will receive information on that. We're trying to set up our first meeting on the stimulus fund. And again, I got to take a couple of minutes and talk about this. We had about COVID and Delta. We had six more cases at the end of last week. This is why I've asked everyone to come into a room like this and wear masks. I don't know what's going to happen, but we met with two epidemiologists, the mayors, last week from Harvard Chan School. It's not when, it's the, or it's when the Delta virus is going to hit. But as we are seventy-seven percent vaccinated in Newburyport, thank you, everyone who's gotten vaccinated, the chances of us getting sick or even hospitalized are very low. However, those who haven't been, and children, are now seeing increases in cases. So I'm asking you to step back, be cautious again. I don't know where we're going to go in terms of, you know, mandating masks again, but we're watching numbers very closely. Please be careful. CDC and the state is asking when you go inside to, you know, large public spaces to please wear a mask. And I've started to notice more and more places inside people are wearing masks. We will continue to keep you updated on where we are with the virus, and thank you. I know it was long. I'm sorry, there's a lot to talk about.
Councillor Collins' question.
Yes, Mayor, you mentioned that the repairs on Arlington Street have been held up a little bit. Have the neighbors been appraised with that, that change?
My understanding is we did, but I will check with DPS to know if it happened.
I do not know.
Okay, I will definitely check on that tomorrow. Donna, could you please make note of that and then make sure? Thank you. Yeah.
Other questions, Mayor? Councillors?
You're welcome.
One, two. Section, which consists of the seeking of the approval of the Minnesota Act twelve. All communications, application forty-four for Mark Arden, Atkinson Street, September twenty-fifth. Application forty-five is Marine Days Custom House, September tenth to September twelve. That's also good to go to Public Safety. Application forty-six is the non-annual coast cure by ride from September eleventh, Public Safety. Application forty-seven, Mark Arden, Middle Street, September eighteenth, Public Safety. Application forty-eight is a bail training warrant, so we pay extended for audit and activism to go to license requirements. Communication here, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight is on so-called light at State and High, the abandoned global oil service station to build a well-planning development. Communication three-hundred-and-thirty-nine, High Street pavement, parking and striking plan, seven-six services. Transfer, one transfer, one-on-nine, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand to police officers, overturn, police officers paid holidays, police officers clothing, police officers accreditation.
Second question for us?
Should, no, we should stay there. Okay, thank you.
I got that.
To go to budget finance. Points, point two sixty-two, Peter Kinns, fifty-tenth Street, Culture Council until eight-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Point two sixty-three, Donna Vera, eighth Chadwick Street, Thillen, to be our Human Resources Director, until seven-one, two thousand twenty-four. The next appointment, because it came late, we're going to pull, and I'll deal with the later, January twenty. Point two sixty-five, Kathleen Britton, Twenty One Phillips Drive, Culture Council until eight-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Point two sixty-six, Cynthia Sharpton, following one-half Market Street, Culture Council until eight-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Following items are removed from the respective committees. Budget Finance, Transfer of one-on-eight, Labor and Public Services, Order two fifty-six, Planning Development, Order seventy-six, Public Safety, on two fifty-six. That is the sending agenda, one change.
We pull, let me just. Human Resources, John?
Two sixty-three, Human Resources Director.
Okay, motion to approve as a number.
I'd like to change a communication, three thirty-nine, from NCS to Public Safety.
Yes. Let's pull it. Put it in the number right here.
Okay.
Oh. Motion to approve those changes. Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Okay, so there are two that were pulled, you got that?
I do.
All right. Mayor's update, will you receive file?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Get votes. Okay. Communications.
Communication three, I'll actually, I'll call, our medical. Communication two thirty-nine, which is just in full, High Street pavement, parking, strike.
On motion to change that from NCS to Public Safety?
Second.
Discussion? Calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get votes. Okay, so that's going to go to Public Safety.
Communication three forty, which is the contract for the place non-show.
Motion to send that to Public Safety? Second.
Calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Votes, thank you. Thanks.
Next, we would have the first reading of appointment, two sixty-three, Donna Vera, Human Resources Director.
Motion for general government?
Second.
Discussion, calls in favor? Yeah. Aye. Any votes?
Next is appointment two sixty-four, which is a simple change. Building commission, that's a conditional building commission, until September first, two thousand twenty-four. And then it's Greg Rolls, two same one word.
Motion for any other?
Second.
Make a question, calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done with the first point.
Yeah.
In the transfers tonight?
None.
Second reading.
Second reading is appointment two fifty-nine, Susan Chase, fourth floor Oak Street, September twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. There's also appointment two sixty-one, which is Building Department, fifty-five Island Street, as an Assistant Harvest Constable and Special Police Officer, mostly pre-qualified.
Second.
Name session, protocol.
Role call for those two, the second plus. Councillor Shand?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Arden?
Yes.
Nine to eleven.
Thank you. Lots of words.
First order is the CPC Festival of two thousand twenty-two recognitions.
A lot of interest, very excited. We have a first and a second, any discussion? Calls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, that's the budget finance, next?
Next is a veterans' parking space, painting, I think, so the voltage painted red to the right, that's quarter two sixty-six.
Motion to refer to naval and city services, but I'm not quite sure. Second.
Second. Yeah, I just wanted to note, if you might ask the question, why we're painting it red? This is the veterans' parking space in the Green Street Lot. I mean, the color red, first of all, will draw attention to it, that, you know, occasionally people park there who are not veterans. This is a designated spot that has already been designated for veterans. There's a sign there, but people miss it. You might ask why the question red. Red is, I have caps, thank you, with banks that states, remember everyone deployed. So this is a color to remember veterans, people, veterans have been deployed, and I'm asking you to paint it red. Thank you very much.
I've just checked in the code, since the emergency service. Well, it actually doesn't have jurisdiction over public parking. Yeah, Public Safety actually is part of the city. Hey, Congressman? Yes, go ahead, Congressman. I'm just wondering, councillors feel we need to send this committee, can we pass it tonight? I don't know, look at this. Well, hey, the motions, whatever you guys want to do. I'm just suggesting.
Yeah, I would draw my motion.
I'll make a motion, an anonymous motion to declare emergency, just to get it done, so people stop parking in it and to pass it tonight.
Second.
Forward. Aye. Okay. All right, so we have, anyone want to debate any urgency preamble? We have to do this in our charter, just keeping score at home. Rick Jones, I guess, follow the roll. Why should we state that the preamble is?
Yeah, the preamble is such that it was passed in one read, charter requires two reads. The means to read, and vice versa, if you saw veterans' parking, Jonathan Berg, this is some. And so, having said that, actually, it's two-three vote, not a roll call. Do you like to do a roll call?
I'd like to do a roll call, and it's emergency, I'm sorry.
I, I couldn't agree more. So roll call on emergency preamble, so order two sixty-six, Councillor Shand?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Arden?
Yes. Identify, entertain, and waive our council rules, if you would, for this committee?
Ten seconds.
Okay, any debate on that? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, now we can just get to underlying.
Motion. Second.
I think you already had, sorry, on the floor, so. Name none. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Get it, please, red. Thank you very much.
Next, we have an emergency preamble on a matter for early voting, senior senator, preliminary, final elections, more specifically for September twenty-first, preliminary election on November second, two thousand twenty-one election. Councillor Black, from, from the preliminary election, says, I can tell you that the emergency is such that we need to get an error of the general legislature to pass the bill, signed by the governor, and there two weeks ago. If not for our last meeting, which was a rush, and we were not, not much time for us September twenty-fourth, you know.
Right motion. Some motion to approve?
Second.
We never, so I did all, my motion approved the emergency and the underlying order, flexible, way of the rule. And we have the rules to not.
Sorry.
Okay, so the second, Councillor, Councillor Connell?
Yes, I'm wondering if the sponsor might follow the emergency preamble, oh, and the early vote, it's all.
All right.
Yep.
It's a round set. Roll call.
This is for all three, waiving the rules, much preamble, and approve the order two sixty-six. Sorry, two sixty-seven, Councillor Shand?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councillor Arden?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Two sixty-eight?
Two sixty-eight is from Councillor Z. Shall I read it, Councillor Z, or is it going?
Motion for budget finance?
Second.
Acceptance of the grants for New Stateville, or we got that, something to say, both grant. Calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Next, we have order two sixty-nine, City Council sets the bracket to give from the municipal conservation of not fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars, from the design of a multipurpose outdoor space for accommodation to a pickleball court. That's where the, by Councillor Z.
Second.
On that line, while I've got the code, I mean, it looks like they have to construct something, so it's not just accepting money, but that's an authorized construction. So, this is a grant only for the time, it's a, don't be for the time. Okay. So, we're to, it's a governor's design, I have to come back with money to build, so. All right. Which committee has jurisdiction over agents? Maybe it's a church. This is church. Wait a minute. Yes, we're in the city service. So, it's okay, the budget finance, if they're okay with that, if you want to jointly, government. Do you like, do you want to give up? Who wants it? Jump call. Okay, it's time to budget finance. All is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
Next is order two-seven, which is the Indigenous Peoples' Day, why can we leave all those appointments?
I know what it is. It's in lieu of Columbus Day, however.
Motion to refer to General Hatman?
Second.
Discussion? Calls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Present. Unpresent, so that's. Eight, nine, two. Eight to one, two. Okay, order two-seven.
Two seventy-one is. In summary, that the City Council shall refer to no extra striking plans submitted here, and authorize DPS and the city management to set rank, and cancel the seventeen fifteen days from the date of approval of the order, submitted by Councilor Ross.
Motion to refer to Public Safety?
Second.
Discussion? Calls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? That's done.
We are on.
We have one thing filed.
Open, sorry, you two. We have. Order two-seven-two, which is the preservation restriction, two-sixty-four, Bridge Street, otherwise known as the People's United Baptist Church.
Motion for a fight, you don't think?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Scarcos, I'm not even. Sorry about that.
Orbiting state, it's an order to limit on-street parking on Union Street.
Motion approved on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on. Second reading. Councillor Z, second by.
All right, second.
Councillor Lee, either one.
Councillor Shand?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councillor Arden?
Yes.
And I do that. Order two-eight, second reading?
Order two-eight-one?
Order two-eight-one, which is going to amend the requirement for a forum on historical commission. Kirkland Park, language, shall require, the positive vote, analysis, shall require affirmative vote on the relevant motion of no less than four members, i.e. no less than said forums, submitted, Councillor Shand. It was motion approved first reading on July twelfth, second reading. Second. Motion approved.
Second.
Aye. Roll call.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tonton.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCollum, yes, and Council Ryan.
Yes.
This is. Order 275, order to increase the membership of the former housing trust, and practically codifies the trust as a municipal board of general offices, and the city group report. It goes on for three days, it's submitted by Council Shan.
Motion to refer to general. General.
General.
Second.
It is under the third view of planning development.
We can do that way too.
Would you have a step?
I'll take the planning development.
Instead.
You have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, debate. All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Planning development.
Order 276, to add a service area on Liberty Street, specifically the first space on the north other side, running for a distance of twenty-five feet, within the corner, State Street and Liberty. Sure, design is also on so.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
Aye. All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Order 277, which is regarding annual reporting on condition and operational performance of city owned buildings, in amendment section five dash forty-seven. Submitted Council Ryan.
Add ten, motion, sense, planning development.
Second. That's a move. Sorry.
Second.
Aye. Favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Order 28, which is requiring a G H G protocol for supporting city projects.
Motion for planning development, second. Aye. All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Order 89, which is on North Star five, which was off-street parking regulations, in amendment section seven A, off-street parking. Council Ryan.
Motion for public safety.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion to report planning development. Sorry, it's. I'm just thinking parking. Done. Done planning development, I second. Any debate? All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, for elections, thank you.
Yes. Up next. So.
Second.
We must have, we must have that. Order 90, which is the late file, which is amending the law profites, is submitted by Council Con, is on the two days.
Motion to report.
Two days.
Motion to refer budget development.
Second.
Aye. All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On video, yes.
Uh, we are.
Sorry. So, I have to be anytime I still, and it's on that. The video on market landing park expansion, however, is going to be, if we pencil it in September 16th. That will be, there's a lot of feedback, I've mentioned, designers at Saku, and they will be coming for us, so that all comers, to tell us the results. Motion approved transfer one oh eight ninety-nine nine twenty-one for the Aspen contract.
Okay, so this is a transfer ninety-nine thousand, it goes to a variety of different accounts, because those are all the accounts that are covered by Aspen. Just some high level stuff first on the agreement, it is a three-year contract, it is retroactive to seven one twenty-one, so that's just a month, years back, but month back. And basically, from, again, from the high level, it's a two-two-and-two contract, two percent increase on an annual basis. The committee met on this at our July fifteenth meeting, and we went through the changes that were proposed. We had Ethan Manning, we had Ben Chief Staff Matt Poobin, and we had Jared Conan joining us from Aspen, and we went through the changes. We also had a full agreement with Red Lines, and I sent that to all of you like a month ago or so, so hopefully we have a chance to review it. Some of the highlights are, I'll just go through them quickly, some language changes around agency fees and how they're collected and passed through. It really doesn't have anything to do with the city, other than it's sort of a pastor, we've seen that language in other contracts, and I would anticipate that we will see that in the future. Second one was a section creating enablement for remote work, for obvious reasons, that wasn't previously built into contracts, but now it is. Provision for employees who can work remotely, obviously, some of this work, it's not remote work, but that is, there's a provision in there to allow it. And then, next one is the ability for the city in working with the union and getting permission of the union to appreciate a higher salary for somebody new who's coming in. At an existing grade, and that may impact other folks who were hired recently at that same grade, so that was something we talked a little bit about. There's a new change on call-out for employees who may have to come in, giving them a four-hour minimum. We changed, there was a provision in the previous contract regarding heat index, which obviously can be relevant, particularly for those whose work is outside. Previously, the threshold was at one hundred and ten, it's heat index, not temperature, this reduces it to one hundred. There were also some changes to night shift differential and clothing allowance, which were relatively minor changes. And finally, some of the positions, as we'll see on the final page, their grades are considered changed, we actually spent twenty minutes talking about grades. Just a little bit confusing to me, but I'm learning, and so some, some positions have moved up into a new grade. This ninety-nine thousand dollars does again cover all of the different employees, so that's why there's some in water and sewer, there's some police in the general fund, and some of the other departments as well, and that would be the anticipated ongoing impact. This comes to the recommendation by the committee to approve it by a vote of three zero.
Other consters, that's matter. See none. All is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed?
I just wanted to provide, I don't have any other items coming out, I just wanted to remind folks, we have our standing meeting this Thursday. We will be taking up, continuing our discussion on Philip's Drive, so if you're interested in hearing more, we expect to get some information back on the request that we made. And we will probably take a tackle at some of the C P C stuff, safe code stuff, and football, and election, electrical fees. One question I want to ask is, I just thought of this, we did not refer C P C committee of the whole, does anybody, you know what, let me not ask, I mean, I, can I make a motion to? Take it out, or write back in, committee of the whole for C P C? Mr. Clark, with that.
Certainly.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, I'll take it out, and then we need to put it back in. We will, to do so, and I put it back in committee of the whole, that way, in case anybody wants, I'll post it. See you tomorrow morning.
Second. Two thirds for that.
Second.
Any debate? All is a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, committee on education, Chair Con is traveling, cannot afford tonight. General governance. We had a bunch of things, I think, that just. No, it wouldn't be, just. Uh, crisis departments, Chair Devlin is absent.
Chair.
Yes.
Pass it on, council. I, to number eighty-one. The short-term rentals, there was a piece of that, after reviewed by K P Law. Mr. Bead comes from college, re-rigs him up, some of his land and planning. So he's working on it after we submit. That's the opinion here.
Service, Chair Con.
Yeah, thank you for that. We looked at. A lease for property at fifty Parker Street, for the purposes of getting our Parks Department a home for the foreseeable future. In the committee, we, we battered it around for a while, we first voted to report that without prejudice to the council for discussion. But then, some additional questions came up, and we got some of the comps from the Parks Department to show that they had done their due diligence in comparing this potential. Site to others that were available, and there were deficiencies in the others that they had investigated. Some, for example, had loading bays with a step as opposed to having a grade, which meant that they couldn't drive their vehicles into them very easily. Some didn't have appropriate services for, for restrooms, et cetera, and so on. They also made a comparison to, to these leases with developing a site, that what was referred to as stunt dump. Putting a, what do you, what do you call it, a prefab building, a slab, a apartment building, or a ward building, I guess they're commonly called, similar to the buildings already out there, where our recycling activities take place. We explored the possibility of putting a wing on that, just adding to that. Again, the price tags started to rise rather precipitously. The, the major restriction being that we don't have a water and sewer service down Kobe Park Lane, and that would add an additional expense. Or develop a well and septic for the purposes of having restrooms at the Parks Department headquarters, if that's where they would love to. So we explored a couple of different possibilities, and I, I'm afraid, I have to report to you that the, the price tags were surprisingly high, and the terms, as you saw in the agreement that was distributed to you, are, are pretty restrictive. One of the examples is that, in the lease that was presented to you. The, the owner would not be responsible for the maintenance of the equipment, H B A C, et cetera, but we, as a party leasing the property, would be. We don't know what the, the conditioned equipment is, we don't know how much life there is left in it, and what the cost might be, if we had to, things such as that. And, and both council, McCollum and myself, came up independently with a figure of sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars a year to house parks there. I don't think anybody was thrilled, but it's just an ballpark of the comps, each of which had their own limitations. So, we just decided to affirm, having looked at the comps, our previous judgment, and send this to the full council for discussion, and live with the outcome of that discussion.
Thank you, so there is no recommendation?
No recommendation.
Disappointing order. Is there a motion on fourth?
Yeah, we'll need some kind of a motion.
I'm sorry. Yeah. For the purposes, got a motion to, why apologize?
Second.
Matt, data, answers.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we had invited this to in budget and finance, because we initially had transfers part of the capital raft this year to fund this, and that was received and filed ultimately in budget finance, and I supported that. I, I don't support this so-called intent to lease, just to cut right to the chase, I mean, there are questions about the finances and those sorts of things, but also, I think there are some questions, some operational questions. And while operations is not the purview of the council, how we fund departments and what we choose to do certainly is, and I, I can't support, I'm not even sure what the intent, what, what supporting this would mean anyways, but I wouldn't support, say, voting to fund it, so therefore it would be illogical for me to vote to support an intent to lease, so I'll be voting against it.
Counselor, I'm pushing to approve the letter.
What is the current situation for the parks, are we still at Market Low Street, and?
Thank you. We have been talking with the attorney from the Ashlagar, as opposed to D C M, which was managing the previous sale. They are interested in entering to a lease with us, so they're using both Raj base now in terms of their work, and we also just entered, entered into a contract with Penares. To go back into the warnings that were an obstacle in terms of going forward, we purchased that property back when, and. The, also the air quality, and the other pieces, air quality of bounds, workers were having some issues with staff, having concerns about air quality there, and having to leave their shifts early. So, that's what we're doing at this point, it'll probably take Andy a month, to six weeks to get the.
Forty days.
To get the information back from Penares, and then we'll, we can talk about there, but for right now, at least until the weather changes, they, they do have the two days at Old Street that they're using.
Thank you. Other counselors or questions, council, council come.
Yeah, I was part of this, the committee to review this, and I, I like the chair had more questions than the answers going through this, right? The forty-seven thousand is clearly closer to seventy thousand dollars, over a five-year term, bottom unknown, stare, I think it exposes it. I, I was. A bit disappointed in terms of what our other options are, right? We did look at comps, as was stated, they were all comparable, whether or not, and, but what I was hoping for as well, and we had asked for, but didn't get, was alternatives, right? And we did talk about briefly, we talked about fifty-seven low, it was right after the big rainstorm, was duly noted, it was six inches of standing water in whole facility. Through the whole, through that whole rainstorm, and finally succeeded. It was noted at that time, that fifty-seven low, the plan was to, to rent a construction trailer, because the building was, what, uninhabitable. That was from Parks Department. So, you know, we, we did try to push towards the stump dump, to try to do phases of this, I think the pad and the. Prefab building would be a nice phase one. You, you know, we are in the water and sewer business, we probably could extend that, but there, there wasn't a plan that says, we want to build. A septic system, we want to build well, they were just conceptual ideas, right? There's no pricing, there was no estimate, we hadn't pursued it anymore, so, you know, we're kind of in this limbo of every, you know, the next best idea coming up here. I know the lease was supposed to help us bridge that gap, but, you know, if it was a one-year lease, maybe, it's a five-year lease, you know, it's a three-year lease with two options. I just, I, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't vote for it because of all the unknowns, and I, I'm, I'm not sure it's the best use of funds, city funds, thank you.
Other casters? Council.
Yes, I am on the committee, but I was not in attendance because I was on vacation, but I compare with the council from number five. I cannot support this just because of the unanswered questions, and I, I do think it's worthwhile to continue to look at other options that may fit the department better, and may save the city some money, thank you.
I just was about to ask one more question at the meeting, too. My understanding was that the developer of Kobe Farm Lane, one of the conditions of approval was some, some kind of construction, some, something. I don't know, because Director Ford happens to be here, could I, from the chair, ask, do I remember that commission of order directly, and where is that process, and what is it exactly?
Yeah, for the record, eighty-four, Director Point and Development, the developer is providing us sixty thousand dollars to be used towards such a facility, but the choice of the use of this fund, we have to say after that.
My understanding was initially, the condition was to actually build something, but we've changed that to money, is that correct?
Correct.
Was that the annual that changed it to funds, as opposed to an, you know, an actual building?
There was a litigation, there was discussion between the developer team and the city, the mayor's office about mitigation for the moment, and even the benefits and so forth, and that was where that got revised, the whole package.
So we feel that whatever they were going to build us, we can, we could build it for sixty grand, so, so in other words, it was better for us to take the cash than to take the.
I can't remember the process, but some of that.
That's very, very odd, I just, what parks needed, and when they designed it, came down to closer to two hundred thousand dollars, in terms of a more building or whatever, if you remember, in terms of they were looking at down by the water, they looked at several spaces where they could put. So, it may, we're going to get two hundred thousand dollars, obviously, I would develop, of course, what makes sense, to get contribution towards that, depending on what we get to that doing. So that money's still there towards something, we just haven't, you know, don't want to rush and use the funding, we won't get it to the end of the project anyway. And so they're just starting the next round of development of Kobe Farm, but that's sort of how that came out. Thank you.
My fault, Director Ford, so what is the approval, decision of the planning for it saying?
If, if that's actually not in the planning or decision, is our fault, that actually came from purchase and sale, when we originally were talking about purchasing open space there, that goes back to that P N S.
Under, Counselor Lee.
Is that, I'm going to ask Director Port, is that open space restricted now?
Yes, there are two blocks facing the street that you see now, closest to Low Street or in the city's ownership. There's a larger piece in the back that is currently being, in the process of being transferred to the city or handed over to the city. That's the remaining piece. So that's the larger piece that may recall the back. Now, the number one on the AR plan. So that piece is being transferred very soon to us, which would round out the remaining open space there, other than the homes in this area.
Yeah, so is there a way to, first step, to walk that back and talk to the developer again?
No, it's really integrally tied to the open space development that the developer had gotten a group of planning boards. So just from the argument on doing that, it's quite, it's part of his own earning process.
How many, Director Port, how many houses have we built so far?
They have completed all the homes there. So I think it's fourteen or fifteen. No, I'm sorry, there is the other piece across the street. There is another piece across the street. But again, that's a second open space. Same ability.
So that, the the homes across the street are not linked to the land tax act?
Correct.
Other counselors? I said my last question.
No, go ahead.
Well, I had a question for the committee that heard the meetings we were looking, mentioning a construction trailer, I think. I mean, I assume a construction trailer to rent that. What's the order of magnitude versus sixty-five to seventy?
Twelve to twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a month. I get, excuse your name.
Yeah.
Sorry, so.
Yeah, all right. Sorry, Counselor Tom.
I didn't express the personal opinion, just made the committee report earlier. But I will stress that in the viability of authorizing this lease arrangement. I'm reluctant to throw this back to the administration without some guidance. I think we often give the administration some some direction. But I'm frankly very uneasy with the lease that has been presented to us. I think as Counselor McCollough states, you know, we have, it's a multi-year lease. It's a stopgap measure. We don't know what's, what the endpoint is going to be. Whether we can develop something independent there, buy another property. It's still up in the air. But I don't feel that I have enough information to make the responsible decision to say, yeah, we should go forward with this lease. I know that a lot of work went into it. I appreciate that. I'm both the the landowner, who's expressed a couple of conversations with me, his eagerness to move forward. But the terms, it seems to me, are are not favorable. You know, if we spend seventy thousand bucks a year, just just to get the first base of the lease, we're out about two hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't sound like a great deal. Because we never get that money back. What do we have? We have a garage space that we rented for a while for the Parks Department and no long-term solution in front of us. So I'm going to vote against authorizing the the pursuit of this particular lease with, in the back of my mind, the hope, but it's only a hope that the administration and 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 members of the council can can show up on our pencils, look at available alternatives, and come back with something more concrete that really solves the problem in the long term.
Further discussion? Seeing nine.
So motion approved on two fifty-six. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta. Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Wallace.
No.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Con.
No.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCollough.
No.
Counselor Ivan.
No.
Motion fails.
Any else in consensus?
Not tonight. Okay, thank you.
Planning and Development.
Motion to approve our first ordinance on zoning.
Before you do that, I'm going to speak on this one, so I have to switch places. Counselor Tom, just this one. We're almost done. We only have five more. Well, for sure. Second.
Ordinance of seventy-six, proposed zoning amendment. All right. So this is the first of a round of ordinances where we were starting to get some of our zoning cleaned up. It's been a few years that we've been working on this. This particular one is going to be more cleaned up than anything else. We had input from zoning administrator and Director Port on this. We had three joint committee meetings with the planning board, and we've been discussing this since June. Some examples of minor cleanup included updating some of our definitions and some of our zoning administrator duties. Some of the more substantive updates included clarifying lot line definitions and setback requirements. Section six F, we clarified some technical equipment to be located and requirements for fencing and landscaping. This section also included allowance for fencing and associated heights. Had a spirited discussion, especially with our Ward Four counselor, who was looking to make sure that we still had the opportunity for fencing on Merrimack Street. With that being said, we did agree that this was a not a good idea because Merrimack Street is one of the thoroughfares coming into town. But the residents do have the ability to come in for a variance if it is too noisy. Also in six F, we discussed accessory structures, meeting zoning requirements, setback, et cetera. This is one where we discussed whether we needed a letter for people. And we all agree that was not something we wanted to get on the path of. But we do have determination of legality from the zoning administrator. So if somebody wants to put up a structure, then they can still get a document from the zoning administrator to say that it is illegal. Much of the updates included in section ten B, that that section further delineates the duties of our zoning administrator and inspector of buildings. If you continue through, you get to section ten D, that we have additions for what the definition of a complete application actually is. Continuing on, we get to twenty-seven F. This includes clarification for the process, process for replacement windows. Most operation replacement windows and how the special permit running authority under DOD special permit can do this. Section twenty-eight D, we get into sheathing, another spirited conversation with the Ward One counselor. This is where we all agreed that demolition of a building section didn't need to include the removal of sheathing that need not be counted for the total calculation for the demolition of an exterior wall. All of this was reviewed by Kiki Law after the second meeting, after we done the second round of amendments. Third meeting, we did review all of this and everything was fine. After that last point hearing, all the figures, the planning board agreed unanimously to approve this. And the planning and development committee also agreed three to zero to approve. Any questions? Any questions here? Any counsel?
Motion to amend. Counselor Ivan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend on page fifteen of seventeen. It's a textual change, but not an intent. So this is section twenty-seven F. The change, instead of the language that you can see about mode of operation, I'd like to make it specific to what we meant, which was opening and closing. So the language would read, quote, "Proposed replacement windows may be made to open and close," open parentheses, "i.e. become operable windows," close parentheses, comma. Provided, however, that such means of opening and closing and replacement windows shall be approved by the SPGA under DOD SP, comma, notwithstanding the conditions of the existing windows as outlined in section twenty-seven F five E.
Second? Motion, second, as per sheet of copy of that language.
Sixteen.
I read it in my imagination. Counselor, it's a per.
It is page sixteen in the last round.
And I'm going to hand, I'll hand them the language right. Okay, we have another, one minute.
So I did, I did speak to this during our joint meeting, but I I failed to make the amendment on the floor when we did the joint meeting. When we originally, I think it extends to some of the council before, we originally passed this seven years ago. We had a language in there, the DOB, saying that we can't change the mode of operation of the window. And what was intended at that time, I can tell you as the author, was to change a window from being, say, sashes to one of those crank-out windows.
Thank you.
That's right. What we found instead is that there are some, especially restaurateurs, that want to be able to open their windows. It's not so much the mode of operation. They haven't insisted on sashes or cranking out as a placement window, but they want them to open and close. Whereas some of these windows, especially the ones redone in the seventies, don't open, they're fixed for security reasons. So the purpose of the amendment is just to clarify what we were discussing, to put it into plain English, to get rid of mode of operation, which is vague, and talk about open and close. That's the only purpose of those.
Could I ask, could you read it one more time?
Did you read it one more time? Sure, sure. So again, the replacement language, I'm sorry if I gave you the wrong page.
What page did we start?
It's section Roman numeral twenty-seven F Frank. Roman numeral twenty-seven F Frank, the only thing that's changing is the underline. So the rest of the section stays the same. So in lieu of the language in the in the packet, which refers to mode of operation, I propose, "Proposed replacement windows may be made to open and close, i.e. become operable," "provided, however, that such means of opening and closing and replacement windows shall be approved by the SPGA under DOD SP, notwithstanding the condition," with a S in parentheses, "of the existing window," S in parentheses, as outlined in section twenty-seven F five E.
Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment? Or questions that Counselor Ivan was proposing? Very nice. We'll take a roll call on the amendment.
Roll call on the amendment, page sixteen. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn. Counselor Con. Oh, that's him. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCollough.
Yes.
Counselor Ivan.
Yes.
Motion fails. Nine to.
And now, if there are no amendments, I'm going to take a discussion of the underlying progress. Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise and say that I'm going to vote for this and support it. There were a number of concerns I had that I was able to bring forth during committee, particularly around how zoning was passed and sheathing, as the Ward Three counselor mentioned. While I'm going to support this, I just want to indemnify myself against my two concerns that I still have that, you know, because this is a big thing and it was really a good product of collaboration, so I'm happy to support it. But I share the Ward Four counselor's concerns about the fencing. And one of the things that, and the reason is, is because we're essentially saying here, you can't put a fence in your front yard. The Ward Four counselor has a ward where many people put fence in their front yard. I too have that consideration on, say, High and Water Street and some other ones. And I'm very, I've learned over my years to be very cognizant of what we're asking our boards to do. So we're asking them essentially to have a resident come in and say, how would I put a fence in my front yard? And come up and against the standard, not substantially more detrimental, which means we don't know what. And then if they approve one, what does that really mean? So we are putting them in a difficult, we could be putting them in a difficult spot where they could say yes to one and no to another, and it's very difficult to be consistent. It concerns me, but not to the degree that I would vote against this. And the second one is, you know, the consistent discussion we've had about what counts towards a demolition. So we did have a spirited discussion on sheathing. We came to a agreement on that. That's great. I do still have some concerns about counting window changes, fenestration. I've had lengthy discussions with the Ward Two counselor, so I understand the importance of fenestrations and where they are. However, I'm just looking at the sort of, at least how I read it, maybe some disagreement that sort of underlying premise of the D-Cod is you get one wall, just to keep it really simple and dumb. You get one wall. And so if you start counting windows in there, you are, it's diminutive to the twenty-five percent. But I understand that that could open up to other abuses. So this is something I think we just have to watch and see, you know, what's really the difference between somebody wanting to expand a window for one day, two days, versus somebody really going hard while to stand and rip out all the windows and expand everything. So those are my two concerns, but I'm very grateful the planning and development committee heard everything, the planning board heard, and did come to, I think, as a fair consensus, and I would be voting for it. I miss seeing the Ward Two counselor on the floor, just to have a say to that. He's going to argue, yeah, so. And smiling, that's good.
Other counselors? A lot easier to refer, just to affect everyone.
Oh, thank you. No, just a clarification on the fencing. So it's it's actually not that you can't do a fence in the front yard, it's that you can't do one over four feet.
Yes, that's correct.
So you can still do four feet. It's just we didn't want to have the huge palisade fences by right. Not because they don't belong on Merrimack Street, because they really don't belong, say, on High Street, Food Street, and so on. That's all.
So you're done? We'll move to the roll call vote. The proposal has amended and amended. Correct. Who was amended? Order seventy-six. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Ivan.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCollough.
Yes.
Nine to. First people in the passes.
Is, would you like to chair it?
Say that, I mean, in our next council packet, we should see an update for short-term minimums. It's as amended, and once we get it in at the end of August, we'll start looking at what schedule needs to look like for another joint hearing this time. That's it, planning and development.
Okay, that's it for planning and development. Chair McCollough.
Yes, appointment two fifty-six, the reappointment of Marshall Murray to MPD police force. Motion to approve, if we've done that.
Second? Second for the passage, you go ahead.
Thank you. Marshall Murray came before the Public Safety Committee. Asked some serious questions about enforcement of speeding and traffic violations. We asked about what we've seen over the previous five years in this vision. The next five years centered around improving the police force individually, sky of candor is more equipment, training, certifications, et cetera. The committee had recommended a positive recommendation of that. I do want to note that there was some, in the original submission, there was some discrepancies between the contract itself and the appointment. We asked the administration to rectify those, and that's what the additional communication that we saw tonight was, was the cleaned up, amended, aligned version of the contract that goes from this point. So tonight, this is just a reappointment of Marshall Murray through June thirty to twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe vote on our recommendation.
We did vote on it at the time. It was three to zero.
Other counselors?
Roll call, appointment two fifty-six, Marshall Murray, Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCollough.
Yes.
Counselor Ivan.
Yes.
Yes, Chair McCollough.
No, that's it.
I'll be continued. Chair Con.
Nothing to see.
Thank you. Rules. Chair Con. Good evening, everybody. Thank you.